Good morning. We want to welcome you to our meeting this morning. We're especially pleased to have all of those in our audience this morning. Those who are viewing us by way of television, we welcome you to our meeting also. We shall now call this meeting to order and we will have our roll call. Our invocation and pledge, we shall stand for that. Commissioner Ward is going to do our invocation and Commissioner McGlaughlin is going to do our pledge. That's our stand please.
Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day and for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Pitt County. Please be with all of us today as we listen and we make decisions and guide our thoughts and our voices. Amen.
Face the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You say our agenda, we have one item, do I have a motion that we approve our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, second, let's vote. Thank you. The item on our agenda for this morning is a presentation from Dr. Massey relative to Pitt Community College and we would like to invite him to come forward now.
Thank you Chair Garris, members of the county commissioners, County Manager Elliott. Thank you very much for allowing us to make a presentation to you this morning on a topic of great interest, not only to Pitt Community College faculty, students, and friends, but to all of Pitt County residents. Can you see, yeah, you have got that on the slide. First, before I get into the presentation, I want to recognize the Board of Trustees members that are my boss and that I work with on a regular basis to address the important needs of Pitt Community College. I want to thank you for your recent reappointment of two of our four county commissioner representatives on our Board of Trustees and they are here today. Mr. Paul Davenport, who is our current Board Chair, and Mr. Walter Williams. Dr. Virginia Hardy is at a conference and unable to attend today and Ms. Kathy Frazier, a former A.D. at Aiden Griffin High School, is working and could not attend. We also have with us several other board members who could join us today. Our incoming Chair, Mr. Kelly Barnhill Jr., Mr. Charles Long, Mr. Raymond Redrick, Mr. Jimmy Nelson, Mr. Peter Cragel, Mr. Don Mills. I think that's all of the board members. We also have several members of our foundation board here. Vera Braswell is in the audience, who is going to be an officer in the coming year. Hope Clark and Ricky Brown and Susan Nobles, also members of our senior staff. Obviously, this is a matter of great interest to all of them and, as I said, to many others. This is a headline that was in the News &amp; Observer on Friday. It's not unusual, it's one that you see quite frequently these days. It's what's happening in North Carolina. That is, the jobs that are being created are primarily ones that require a technical background. Usually, an associate's degree a minimum, although it could be simply certifications and skills needed that are offered at a technical college. Unfortunately, a lot of this is happening in different parts of the state, not necessarily our own. And you've heard recently about some of the economic development reports done locally of things that are needed to push Greenville forward in a competitive way with other parts of the state of North Carolina. In every one of those reports, the Pitt Community College's role is highlighted as essential, very important, one that's provided by the state, supported by the county, and one that we are proud to follow through on. I'll get into why I think this is such an important headline in a second, but I don't need to remind you, but perhaps for the members of our audience, the funding for the community colleges are primarily provided by the state. We now receive about $45 billion a year in funding for our programming. That includes personnel and equipment. The county's responsibility is for the facilities. Those facilities, creating and maintaining them is obviously vital to our ability to serve this area and I thank you for what you've done over the years to help us. What we're coming forward with today is simply another version, another extension of that support that's so vital for Greenville and Pitt County to be competitive in this market. And again, I don't need to tell you that the politics is shifting in this state with a lot more focus on the urban areas, the areas in the central and western parts of the state. So I think we need to do everything we can to counter this movement and I think Greenville and Pitt County are in great positions to do that as a small metro area, but without Pitt Community College, that would be much more difficult to accomplish. The first priority in our capital improvement plan, and I should mention that the capital improvement plan was submitted to your county manager just a few weeks ago. It was approved and finalized by the Board of Trustees and it is the result of years of planning. It's based on the master plan that was approved initially in 2004, updated in 2009, and it will continue to be a guide for us in the future. It has been a great investment for us and it allows us to do what we tell students to do. Start early, plan, and be prepared for changes and adjustments as you go along. This first priority is one that is true to our core at Pitt Community College and relates to that whole topic of high tech. The area of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and I'll say manufacturing as the M in that quotient, is very important, not only to Pitt County, but to our entire nation. We have to elevate our ability of our workers to perform in these key areas. I've got a few components of this science building listed here. The biotechnology program, yesterday we heard an impassioned appeal from our biotech faculty who are now conducting their operations at the tech facility north of the river. That was never intended to be a permanent location for our biotech program and we've reached capacity in what we do there. As you know, we pay rent to the Economic Development Commission for that facility. We would like to move it to the campus, allow it to grow, and allow those students to take advantage of other services on the main campus. And we know that with partners like DSM and Metrics, the need for biotech-trained workers will even increase. Physics, astronomy, and geology, part of our general education program, is a key element and growing element of what we do and it's so closely connected with pre-engineering. You know, East Carolina University started their engineering program a few years ago and we've seen a great progression of students considering ECU or North Carolina State University's engineering program. And the skills learned in this pre-engineering area are relevant for a lot of different career directions. Biology, I don't have to tell you how strong we are in health sciences because of Vident and other providers in our area and we are so pleased that among the 58 community colleges, we're the third biggest in terms of health sciences programs. That means there's a lot of biology classes that we offer and many more of them will be able to be offered here in this facility. Pre-engineering industrial training, we're doing more and more in this area. Part of that is simulating what's happening on factory lines and in companies and part of it is applying programs such as robotics and NIMS, which is advanced manufacturing, to best practices that all of our students are learning. So STEM is at the core of our highest priority. This is just an example of one of our students at the Tech Center facility. Again, we have outgrown that facility and need to bring it back home and put it on the main campus. It's an example of one of our physics classes right here and I think that it illustrates the interest that we have among our students in science. We want to promote and reward that. In fact, we're offering more organic chemistry on our campus than ever before. I think we've seen calculus, we've seen a lot of advances in areas that had been not as strong in the past. That complements classes like welding and electronics and HVAC that continue to be very essential to our operation. And by the way, we're offering Aiden Griffin, at Aiden Griffin High School, welding this fall. We're looking forward to interacting with high school level students to create interest in those skills. Our second priority is to relocate the basic law enforcement training program to a facility closer to campus. This is for two reasons. Number one is BLET has outgrown the space that they're in now. This is the largest program of its kind in eastern North Carolina and we continue to be a leader in public safety and law enforcement. We will be able to free up the space that they are using now and at the back of the Greenville Center. And some of you may remember, the BLET used to be in the back of the Humber Building, before we renovated the Humber Building, so it's only been about eight years since they've been over at the Greenville Center, which was a great home for them temporarily, but this would provide a much better space for them in the future. Why do we need it at the Green, why do we need more space at the Greenville Center? Because of the kinds of volumes you're seeing here in productivity of certificates and completions of programs in a variety of areas, and this is in the non-credit area. You know, often the credit program where we had 9,000 students enrolled last fall gets most of the press, but it's those short-term programs for people that need to get the training and go back in the workforce that is actually growing at a faster rate. Total non-credit and credit enrollment this year has been over 23,000 at Pitt Community College. This is just an example of some of the completers and you'll see a strong strain in here of public safety programs, the law enforcement, the emergency medical services, the fire services, you see the healthcare programs, but you also see those business and industry support areas and occupational extension. Those are key because they get people into programs like chiropractor assistant and things like that, that they get training and then go right into the workforce. I don't have to remind you of this quote, one that I've made frequently to you and it unfortunately remains true today, that of the 58 community colleges in North Carolina, Pitt Community College is the most crowded. One might say we're the most cost-effective in utilizing the space that we have, but there's limits to that. There's limits to what we can do and particularly in the science area to extend services and provide a quality education. In the most recent report from the state of North Carolina, North Carolina Community College average was 85 square feet per student. The Pitt Community College average was 40 feet per student, significantly lower than the number 57 school. By the way, I looked at some charts that were in my closet the other day and they were talking about in 1998, the same types of statistics. At that point, we were at 59 square feet per student. So with the rise of enrollment, even with the new buildings we've brought on, we've had a continuing lowering of that. A different way of looking at space is one that I haven't shared with you before, but I thought I would today. It is a capacity enrollment ratio and it's focusing on those areas that you've asked us to focus on more than anything else, and that is instructional and library facilities, the core of what we do to serve students. This is assignable square footage of instructional and library facilities and you have at your place a handout which illustrates the record of not only the community colleges, but all the universities, all the private colleges in North Carolina. And Pitt Community College is the most crowded of them all, at a ratio of 2.42 as opposed to 4.09 being the average for the community college system. And if you'll notice those numbers, there are very few of them below three. So, you know, we're not only the most crowded, but we're the most crowded by a bit. Being crowded is one thing. We've done a lot to respond to that challenge in the last decade and more. One of the things we've become is a leader in online education. Online education is a great tool for allowing more students to take classes at their convenience. It also allows us to economically utilize the facilities that we have because with the pure online courses, we don't have to use bricks and mortar as much. However, the ratio of students, the percentage of students who take online courses has escalated to a point that we feel is not sustainable in the future. It's grown from 29% in 2011 to 33% in 2012. This is something we're monitoring carefully. It's especially a concern with the science programs, where we offer actually some courses online, but there's a limit to what we can do in terms of simulating lab experiences and other types of direct classroom contact with faculty. Students often prefer to take the live courses because then they have the interaction with the instructor and of course, if they're on campus, they have access to support services there as well. So this is a statistic that's important for us to watch. This does not count those mini-courses that are what we call blended, where part of the instruction is offered live, part of the instruction is offered online. You know, that's an interesting combination that I think works for student schedules and it's been effective for us in terms of quality programming. This is a slide which many of you probably remember. This is when we did the groundbreaking for the Herman Simon Building. The Herman Simon Building is a health sciences building over on the Sam's Club side of the campus. We were able to accomplish this because of the partnerships that we have with a broad cross-section of people in Pitt County. You see some of these people in this picture. The reason I included this is because it was a great time. It was a way that we could work together and it was an example of the kinds of things that we feel we can do even with these two projects. We're seeking federal grant money. We think there are strong possibilities from the U.S. Department of Commerce, the EDA grant, which Beaufort County Community College has received, other schools have received. We think there are chances for major gifts, but the challenge is that we cannot do it by ourselves. We need the county's support. We need the county's investment and we feel that is the direction we need to move in the future, to connect, drive down as much as possible the costs of projects, but realize that the core of our support has to come from Pitt County. We thank you for giving us the chance to talk with you. We've also communicated to the county manager the operating expenses that connect with this program and we know those are of concern to you as well as the overall cost. We'll do whatever we can to keep those as low as possible. Those are important support in terms of maintenance, utilities, security on campus, but we will work hard to keep those low and we feel we can make it even more cost-effective than what we explained to the county manager. In fact, we're exploring the option, the possibility of sale of some of our property near the campus because we feel that we have now a situation where our land is more than ample, whereas our facilities are, as proven here, way under what they should be. We thank you for all of your attention and your support over the years. We would like to have you consider this as something you could do soon because we know that the process of going through the state construction office and of planning and bringing up a building takes years. The cost of construction is still reasonable and we're working with local architect John Farkas on the science building plan. So we have done a lot of the foundation work already and we want to move forward with this in the future. Just one last historical note, the last time that the county commissioners supported a general obligation bond for support of Pitt Community College was in 1989. At that point, Pitt Community College went to the voters for $10 million. That was a lot of money. It's a lot of money now, but what we got was tremendous endorsement from the people. And so that's just one example of what's happened in the past. We feel that we can make that happen now. So thank you very much for your attention. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, before we start asking questions, I'd like for our manager to give us some input.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Massey, for your presentation and I think Dr. Massey makes a good case for this facility, for facilities, for the community college. Did want to, before the board asks questions or makes comments, wanted to be able to make some comments on this in terms of factors I think are important to consider in this. And Dr. Massey did allude at the very end that he is talking about a general obligation bond referendum, which would be a vote of the voters of Pitt County to vote this up or vote it down if the Board of Commissioners, if you were to seal out on the ballot. And my understanding is the Board of Trustees has voted and would like that to occur this November?
Yes, if possible.
Right. So a couple of factors I think need to be taken into consideration. In terms of the new debt, if you're looking at about $20 million worth of debt, you're talking about a debt service of about a penny and a half just on the principal and interest over a 20-year note. Operating costs, you're talking about a quarter of a cent, so you're talking about a penny and three-quarters of new servicing that would be required for both the principal interest and the operating cost. So for every penny that is levied in Pitt County, it's about $1.1 million is what we raise. The second thing I'd like to point out is the, in terms of economic recovery in Pitt County in our local economy, this year we did see in the budgeting process some limited recovery, which was much welcomed in the budgeting process, but we've only seen a year of that. And I guess my question is, can we sustain, and hopefully we can and will grow from that basis, but we have a very short timeframe in terms of what we've seen so far. My next point would be dealing with the county's budgeting process and what we've done over the past two years. We have been utilizing the words of a structurally balanced budget or budgeting process. Last year, we drastically altered our organization in terms of cuts and early retirement incentives and reduced our fund balance appropriation, got our revenues in line with our expenditures and came out last year where we were able to grow our fund balance and we're projecting that we'll do the same in the new year. So we're actually living within the natural growth of the tax base right now and I'd have to say that this plan or this strategy that we've embarked upon is working to date. Praise God, I'm glad to say. In terms of one element of the county's budgeting process is a capital improvement plan and like Dr. Massey said, this was presented to us two weeks ago. He and I did talk back in the, earlier in the season that the community college was going through a process to identify capital needs and he'd wish that he could have it to us sooner, but at this point, we don't have this request in the county's CIP as adopted. But I do acknowledge that he and the trustees were working on this and the timing did not coincide necessarily to get it in the current year's budget. In terms of the penny and three-quarters that would need to be identified either through a tax increase or utilized through any natural growth in the tax base, or I guess the third option would be in terms of cutting programs and services or any combination thereof of the three to meet that obligation. But my concern is that over the past three or four years, and this is the first year in four years, wouldn't five, but we hadn't done any type of a compensation increase for our employees. There are other things. Next year, we're looking at bringing on the E Block at the detention center. That's the equivalent of a million dollars or a penny on the tax rate. We have still a pent-up need for vehicles. We have a pent-up need for the prior year cuts and service reductions that we've gone through that departments are making requests to try to restore to meet services. So I have a concern that if the, if this project goes forward, and there's a number of mechanisms that you can utilize to pay the debt. Geo, the Geo bond, which is a vote of the voters, which pledges the taxing authority of the county to meet that obligation, you can go that route or you can go the COPS route. COPS is your certificate of participation. That's what is what we have used historically in the past 10 years and another option would be pay-as-you-go, basically paying cash for the projects. On the COPS, we have been using the quarter cent sales tax and I'll get into that here in just a moment. Another point I'd like to bring out, in terms of what we have done, in terms of our recent borrowing practices, using the quarter cent sales tax, we've been able to leverage $62 million worth of leveraging power out of the proceeds of the quarter cent sales tax. We're bringing about four to four and a half million dollars a year in quarter cent sales tax and the distribution of those dollars, we've done about $22 million for Pitt Community College and the three main projects we did there was the Russell Academic Building, the automotive carpentry facility, and then the facilities maintenance complex. For Pitt County schools, of the balance of the 63 million, which was about $41 million worth of projects, we were able to obviously do renovations, schools, new schools, additions to schools. Another factor that concerns me right now is in the whole, the big picture of this is the state budget right now between looking at the House budget scenario, the Senate budget scenario, depending upon how this all lands. Right now, with the Senate plan, the county would be in a deficit mode of about $1.3 million and we've already adopted our budget. So we would have to figure out how to move forward. If the House plan goes forward, we'd be to the good $1.1 million. I'd have to be neutral and just keep what we have and not be in a plus or minus position. Another factor, and this one is a matter that is still pending in the General Assembly, and that being, will there be two other questions on the ballot this fall? And that deals with the Board of Education and will there be a question about reducing the size of the Board of Education from 12 to nine? Will there be the second question on the term limits? Right now, I believe Genesis passed the House, it's sitting, it's had three meetings in the House, one reading in the Senate?
Right, passed three readings in the House, crossed over to the Senate, and has passed the first reading in the Senate.
So a concern, and that's just a moderate concern that we would be putting a Geo question with that question as well. And the last concern would be the limited time if it's going to move forward to be on the ballot for November. Normally, I'd say it probably takes a good, at least a good six to nine months to vet a process out to formally educate the public and also have any outside groups that would be advocating for the passage of the referendum. This is a very short timeframe. We have worked with bond council, the county's bond council, to develop a calendar of dates of actions that would need to occur. And the reason that this special meeting was called rather than just introducing this topic on July the 8th, the next time you meet, is because if you decide to go forward with it, the resolutions, the bond calendar and so forth would have to be adopted immediately on July the 8th and there's a very tight timeframe in terms of communicating this to the Pitt County Board of Elections, communicating this to the U.S. Department of Justice for the preclearance process in Washington, DC, and then getting the actual question put on the ballot. So with all those factors being said, you can probably read between the lines, I'm recommending to delay consideration of this for 12 to 24 months based upon the factors I've laid out. But obviously, if the board decides to go forward with this, I will support this whole heartily and work with Dr. Massey and the community college to educate the public. As you recall, we as staff, we cannot promote the question that's on the ballot. We can educate the public as to the virtues of the question, but we have to remain neutral. So, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And also thank you, Dr. Massey, excellent presentation. I don't think there's any one of us up here that does not support Pitt Community College and does not recognize the need when we and does not recognize the need when we see those numbers that we're number 58. We don't like that. But Scott has expressed some points of concern that I have and that we have talked about. But what I want to do now is give an opportunity for my fellow commissioners to ask any questions, to see where we go from here. So I, since I, probably everyone has some questions, so what I think I'll do is just go down the line and start with Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is something that we all support, the need for these two facilities. I attended the BLT in the corner of the Humber Building. But I do have some concerns, and they're mainly centered around our budget for this year, in my opinion, somewhat artificial because of the amount of money, one-time money that we had. So we were able to appear, not that we're in bad shape, but I think we're able to appear in slightly better shape than we are, and we have to see what the revenues do for next year. And my other concern about the referendum is this is a municipal election year, and turnout is going to be rock bottom. I think very few people that do not live in, well, very few people that live in the municipalities vote anyway during these years, and then you stretch that out over the county. And I really worry about such a low turnout deciding what could essentially be almost two pennies on the tax rate for everyone else. And we try every year to get voter turnout up, and it just doesn't seem to happen, especially on the municipal years. It's hard enough on a midterm congressional year to get people out when there's not a presidential contest. And those are my concerns with it. Obviously, I agree with the need. I've been to the McThriff, well, what we've traditionally stuck in our head is calling it that, that facility, and seeing the needs there. And obviously, the needs for what's going to go on in the future with science and technology. And that would be my comments. All those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I respond just briefly?
Absolutely.
First off, relating to Mr. Elliott's comment on the tight timeframe. We know that's tight, but we also feel we have the capability and the interest and the commitment from our friends in the community to move forward with a vigorous campaign. That would then respond to what Mr. Webb mentioned in terms of voter turnout. If you look at the numbers from when Pitt Community College was on the ballot, I think we've had a good show of support, not just from people who supported Pitt Community College, but from the voters in general. We will do everything we can to promote the viability of this issue and inform the voters that it's there. So I think that there will be a personal interest on the part of the voters if they're for it or against it. And we want to, we don't want it to be done behind closed doors. We want it to be a well-attended election, and we'll do everything we can to make that possible.
Okay. Commissioner McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a member of the PCC Foundation Board, I certainly see the tremendous need of this capital improvement plan. However, listening to the manager as he talking, but I also would like to just hear from our financial director, Dwayne Holder, he may have some other insight in terms of finances that was not mentioned. Or maybe, could you enlighten us, Mr. Holder, on any other aspect that maybe not been stated?
I think our manager covered the issue pretty well. Our preference would obviously be for any of these projects or a combination thereof to be funded out of the quarter cent sales tax fund. But I would concur with Scott's assessment of the situation.
If I can take on to that, the quarter cent sales tax that we've leveraged $62, $63 million worth of projects, we're to the point where we've leveraged the far max, almost the far maximum what we can leverage out of that fund. We definitely could leverage another $20 million worth of projects out of it. So I want the public to be aware of, and we do appreciate the public voting for this back in 2008?
2007.
2007, thank you. That allowed us to do that.
And I also would like to also yield to our legal expert from this perspective, what would you like to say to the board, Ms. Gallagher, in terms of what has been stated thus far?
I concur with the manager's comments. We discussed it in advance of the meeting with the finance officer and the manager. From a legal perspective, we can make happen what is the will of this board. So there's been reference to tight timeframe. If it's the desire of this board to move forward with a general obligation bond process, I can work with bond council, and we can meet the tight timeframes to accomplish it by a November election, if that's what the board wants to do. So from a legal perspective, I can work with you and with the community college to make happen what you decide to make happen.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Chairman, I'd say that I see, you know, the critical need of supporting this. However, you know, I know that Pitt Community College is the crowded, as stated, of the 58th Community College in the state. And they do such a tremendous job in providing educational opportunities for our citizens. You know, just kind of gauging the field of this board, now, Mr. Chairman, you know, I got a feeling that it's not going too far, and I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on it right now. I think that maybe we might could table this to our next meeting, July 8 meeting, and consider what has been stated before we land to vote. That is my thinking right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I have any concerns about this, it's that the public understand that it will cost some tax money. When they go to vote, I think they need to know that. But the close timeframe, in my opinion, has been carefully looked at by Dr. Massey and his staff. And I think that they can meet the timeframe, and I support the bond referendum on the earliest possible time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott made reference to mandates that we've got to view from a budget standpoint about the opening of the sale block and the cars and certainly, I as one individual thinks that Pitt Community College should come before those two mandates. But Scott, you referenced that for the $20 million debt, it would take about a cent and a half tax increase?
Yes, sir.
And for the services to provide, once they were done, it would take about one and three-quarters cents? What did you say about that?
Be a quarter of a penny on top of the penny and a half, for a total of one and three-quarters, to do both debt service and operating expenses.
So you're saying one and three-quarters, not two?
Correct.
Someone mentioned two a while ago, that's my point. I certainly feel that Pitt Community College and the staff and the board has brought to us an issue of what the capital priorities ought to be. I feel definitely that the needs are there. I do have some reservation because of the shortness of the time, Dr. Massey. And one reference is made to the last time that a bond referendum passed for Pitt Community. I don't like to be a loser. I wouldn't want the timeframe or shortness there are to prevent us from winning. And if the people voted down, you somewhat tie my hands as a commissioner, not totally, but it gives some reference to that. I think we need to put a sufficient time on this so that we win, and that is my feelings.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood?
I have given a lot of thought to this also, and the concerns that the manager brought up are the concerns I think that many of the commissioners are feeling. We have no idea what the state tax plan is going to be, but we also, but we do know that parts of it, if passed as they stand, we're going to be reduced by a few million dollars, I think, at least one anyway, in one direction as far as loans that we have been relying on. I'm concerned again about the timeframe, and my concern is the same of Commissioner Owens, and that is, I like to win. I was very fortunate to be, I can't remember whether I was chair when we started the quarter cent sales hikes, but I know that Chairman Garriss and I served on the committee with the chamber and PCC and the commissioners, and we worked almost two years, starting out with one cent. And almost two years later, when we finally got it down to a quarter of cents from the state and they gave us permission to move forward, I am here to tell you that our little army of people were ready to move. We had laid the plans, we had everything ready to go. And even though that was a short frame for us to get it on the municipal ballot, we knew that that, at that time, that was a good time for us to do that. I would not want to shortchange anything that's this important. And I like to win, too. And I feel like if there is any slim possibility that this would not pass, then there'd be nowhere for us to go as far as commissioners are concerned in helping, you know, to achieve all of this. They, there, I have a kind of a compromise depending on, that I might throw out when we get through all the commissioners. I serve as liaison to the board, so I have a very special connection. I sit there and listen every day, I mean, every month or every two months, however often we meet. And I know the need is there. I know that a biotechnical building with sciences, we've got to come forward on the community colleges because our students are flooding the community colleges as freshmen and sophomores aimed to a full year or a graduate degree in these areas. And we have got to offer these programs and give them room to grow. So it, this was a very, this was a very difficult budget year, even though we were better off than we had been in a good while. But we didn't get to this past budget year without really sacrificing the last four or five years as a county and as commissioners as far as our planning of the budget. I think it was the most difficult four years I have served on the commissioners as far as trying to keep a tax increase down and yet provide the services needed for this county. Our employees had had no increase in salary until this year, and they just got a little hair of an increase for the first time in four years, right? This would have been the fifth year. Anyway, I have real mixed emotions, I think partly because of serving there. But one of my main concerns along with all of the thoughts that were put forward by the manager, and I have written most of them down previously because I had the same thoughts. I think the time is my biggest worry because I want to win and I want it to go through. So that said, I'm finished.
Commissioner Carlson?
I would support the general obligation bond. I'll go on record now and say that I will not, under any circumstances, go for a COPS. I think COPS are overused. They are workarounds to the North Carolina State Constitution, which says that such things as this should be voted on by the people. I understand the manager's concern, but it would seem to me that if a general obligation bond was voted on by the people, people, we're talking about new money. We're not talking about operating out of our existing budget. And I think that the wording that would go onto the ballot would in some way let the people fully understand what they're voting for as far as what that cost would be. But think about it, is if you have $100,000 worth of property and you get taxed one penny additional, we're talking about $10. If you got $200,000, then we're talking about $20. If it was two cents, then it'd be $40. So if you've got $200,000 worth of property, it would cost people less than 10 cents a day to be able to support the community colleges' request here. Now, I'd like to know what the general obligation bond is for. Is it going to be for $20 million? Or I see this thing for the 10-year plan of $120 million. So what is, what's, what are we talking about here, Dr. Massey?
Well, I've heard loud and clear from you individuals and from you as a group, I did not assume that a large amount, such as $120 million, was within the realm of possibilities. That is our entire capital improvement plan. Our proposal is for $20 million. We did talk about 25 at one point, but we lowered that, lowered our sights to 20 million. That's our highest priorities that include the science building and the BLT building.
So, but if I look at the 20-year plan, I mean, 10-year plan, it would seem to me that from 13 to 15, you got a 20 to 25 million. From 15 to 16, you got about another 20 to 25 million. 17 to 18, another 20 to 25 million. 19 to 20, another 20 to 25 million. I don't know whether you're thinking about coming back a year from now and having another request for a general obligation bond or whatever to be able to cover it. But looking at the big picture and looking at the needs, it reminds me of the 1970s. I want everybody to go back to that period. North Carolina, in particularly eastern North Carolina, was looked at by the automobile industry. And the state legislature basically said, we're not going to fund anything additional towards the community colleges, or only gave marginal amounts. Guess where it went? If you go to Greenville, South Carolina, Anderson, South Carolina, all the way north to the North Carolina border, or actually into Charlotte, all the way down to Atlanta, look at all the automobile industries that are there now. There's Bosch and many others. And all the ancillary businesses that came along with that, that could have been if the, if our, if our leaders in the 1970s had had the foresight, could have been largely in eastern North Carolina. Think of what that would have done for us and the state. So here, I think we're sitting on a threshold as to looking at, I'm going to say, not just the 20 million that you're asking for now, but over the next 10 years, whether or not we really want eastern North Carolina, and Greenville in particular, to become an economic power within the state. Now, the state is supposed to support certain things, and we are obligated for the facilities that go along with it. And largely, and I understand, because I was here for eight years prior to my defeat in 2008, I remember how we did not have the money, and the community college has now gone to the point where they have, it's overcrowded. They're spread out all over the county, the city of Greenville, basically. And it's, to me, almost an embarrassment. We, as county commissioners, should be looking at what's best for this county. And I've heard people on this board argue that they didn't want people coming to our community college from other counties. And I thought, oh, my God, how narrow-visioned is that? And we have an opportunity here. And I think that we need to go forward with the Geo bond. I think we need to do it quickly. I don't think we should delay it 12 months. I don't think we should delay it 24 months. All that does is aggravate the already existing problem. If the people in the county are willing to step up and pay more money for this, I don't know how we can, in good faith, deny that or delay it. So, well, I've got a lot of things I could say further, but I think that's it in a nutshell. Dr. Massey, I really like the idea of what you're doing in Aiden Griftin as far as the welding. I am a leading advocate of vocational education in high school. I think that our school system has largely let down the citizens of Pitt County because they have gone away from vocational education. We need more of it in high school, not less of it. And if you can partnership with the schools... And if you can partnership with the schools and help to augment that, then God bless you and your board for doing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner James?
Well, I'm a little different than most of these county commissioners. I'm going to tell it the way it is. The people that I represent do not want any more of the lower taxes. None. They're high enough as far as Pitt County is concerned. I appreciate all the work that Pitt Community College does. I've supported you and you know that. I've supported the quarter cent sales tax because I think that is a fair tax. Everybody pays for it. And you might say, most of these county commissioners will support it. I might as well be honest. I will not support it. These are the reasons that I will not support it. Number one, many of your students that you have come to Pitt Community College are from other areas outside of Pitt County. I do not believe in taxing the people of Pitt County to pay for buildings for other students to come to Pitt County to go to school. We are not a community, uh, uh, a junior college. We are a trade and industry college. That's what we voted for. That's what I voted for in its existence and that's what all of these gentlemen voted for. And let me go on a little bit, uh, of course, farther. We need to utilize, gentlemen, ladies, all of the buildings that we have in Pitt County school systems. We have one school that I know of, it's not even half full as far as students are concerned, not being used. The public schools here in Pitt County as in many counties, they're not usually around. They probably are now because they're feeding them breakfast in the morning time and lunch and things such as that. But we've got many acres too, actually, you know, and that was the board, the trustees of Pitt Community College that had that wisdom. And of course, county commissioners too, who purchased that land for future development of the college, which of course is wonderful, it's a good thing. But, uh, there are many other reasons. I think you're going to have a big selling point. Believe me, you got to sell people like me, and I'm not really close, but you're going to convince me that this is the way to go, which is going to benefit the most. Because I think we have that, I can ask the manager right now, and this is what disturbs me. You people out there, business people just as I am, Mr. Manager, how much interest are we paying now on money that we have borrowed? Just tell us.
You have a debt, let me kind of frame the, my answer. You have a debt, you have an overall debt capacity of over seven hundred million dollars according to the North Carolina General Statutes, but according to our, our bond rating agencies in New York, they only allow us to, they would like to see our debt service be twelve to fifteen percent of our general fund expenditure. So technically, to keep a double A bond rating, we can only have about between three hundred and three hundred and fifty million dollars worth of overall debt. We currently have about half of that right now. So we pay about, Duane is about sixteen million a year and...
We, we're servicing about seventeen million dollars a year and seven million...
We're paying Pitt County right now in excess of seventeen million dollars interest, and this is just interest.
No, the interest, the interest is seven million. Seven, seventeen is the total debt, annual debt.
But also in terms of having that double A bond rating, the agencies do expect you to have some debt.
Your philosophy and mine is different, though. You believe the more money you owe the better your daddy is.
No, I, no, I believe in a perfect world, which we don't live in, but I believe if it was a perfect world, we should go pay as you go.
That's right.
Without doubt, but we...
And certainly I support. And, but I do believe that we can work out the quarter cent sales tax. You see, Pitt County schools now have the buildings that they need. I don't know how many of you realize or not. All you have to do is to ride throughout Pitt County and you'll see some wonderful schools. And the way, the atmosphere that's in Raleigh today, I don't need to tell you about public schools. It's really the top public schools right now. It's really under pressure. And I believe that this Pitt County Board of Commissioners are going to be able to help Pitt Community College a great deal more with the quarter cent sales tax than we have. And, uh, it goes back to that twenty million that we are eligible to probably be able to use as time goes on. When will, will some of this debt be paid off that will free up additional money, Mr. Manager?
I defer to Duane on the debt...
That's what I'm very much interested in.
Well, particular, in particular out of the quarter cent, uh, sales tax, is that what you're...
No, I, I'm talking about the millions that we owe. If we pay those off, then we don't have to repay them and so forth.
I think the next project coming off is part of the courthouse, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to, that we will not be paying this interest.
We're, we're prob, you're probably, um, seven years, six or seven years...
So it's going to be a, a good while, because that's a good way, of course. But anyway, uh, that's the way that I feel and I, as you, people that know me know I don't be around the bush. I tell you the way it is, I too don't believe in losing. So you remember that. And I don't lose many times either, remember that. Okay?
Mr. Garris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Garris, could I say just a word in response?
Right, Mr. ...
Uh, Mr. James, I do hear you and, and I value your opinion and I value your service on, on the county commissioners. Uh, we have looked hard at the quarter cent sales tax. We've talked with the county manager, with Mr. Holder, and, uh, the information we received was that was really not going to be a source until twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, something around in that category. And of course, you remember, we share that with the Pitt County schools. So, uh, you know, I'd be great, I'd be very pleased to consider other options. Uh, this is not the only way to go, but it was the way that we thought was possible.
I think we need to look at options. We can do, and you, as I said, I want to help you, I really do. But, but to me, you know, I'm the old person. I remember when things weren't so good and, and you borrow so much money and you get yourself into bad trouble. And I try to work with this county government just like I do in my own business. Thank you. I won't say anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager. Dr. Massey, my concern is land, it would be very nice if there were some Bowen farms or other farms in, in the vicinity of Pitt Community College where some of this, uh, some of these, uh, facilities could be built without attaching them to those fifty and sixty-year-old buildings. I looked up Scrapbook Father's Day, uh, pictures that some of me and my friends took in nineteen fifty-eight on that campus. And I'm a senior citizen now with great grandchildren and, and I can remember when the first stakes were put in the ground on that building. I was living in Warrnambool down Mill Street, just a few blocks down from Mr. Vernon White's home. And my father, he told me, he says, uh, they calling this Winter Green Park where we're building this home, David. He said, one day, Winterville and Greenville are going to be connected and Fright Tower Road is a connector, south side Warrnambool, north side Greenville. And so all of these expansion are basically being renovations to expand and co, connect to building that older building that are already built on the campus. But where there's a will, there is a way. And, and the college is going to continue to grow. And as Ms. Boy was saying a while ago, more students are going to be needing those facilities and needing the, the curriculum that is being offered and, and to them out there at the, at the campus. And I'm just hopeful that with all these brilliant minds and those valuable board members and all, that some type of, uh, agreement can come up to make some of these things a reality. Uh, one thing I, I, I admire about you, you said ten, ten-year capital improvement plan. And this is, uh, two thousand and thirteen, so we're looking at somewhere around two thousand twenty, twenty-two or twenty-three for this to, for the time period to build. And the, the basic law enforcement training center and the science building combined is two of the main needs that you stress of bringing on the campus. But, um, as I was out in the area a few days ago, you just don't have the luxury of having another farmer or somebody that has some space that they would be willing to, to, to sell to the university like the Bowen did and some of the others down there. And so, uh, that's one thing that, space needs is one thing. I mean, you know, to, to, a place to put these facilities is one, is one thing, Ron, because the more you enlarge those buildings on campus, the less parking you have for those who will be attending and, and, and on campus. So, uh, I support, I support with, uh, I'm in, I'm, I'm in agreement with, uh, the need and hope that this board can come up with, your board, and, and we can come to a finalization of how, how it can happen. But it can happen. And if, if things improve or continue, it will happen. So thank you for your presentation this morning and thank you, your board members for coming up and supporting Dr. Massey and his oversight in trying to improve Pitt Community College and make it one of the leaders in the east and one of the best in the world, not the state, in the world.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hammond, did you have a response?
Uh, just wanted to let Mr. Hammond know that we will be constructing a new building. The science building is not an addition to a current building. It would be, uh, across from the construction industrial tech building on the Bowen Farm. Uh, we're, uh, we still got some growing room on that Bowen Farm. That was a great investment of the, of the county commissioners in nineteen ninety-three.
Right.
I think some people were skeptical about it at the time. Thank goodness we have it. And in fact, with the state bond funds from two thousand, we were able to purchase the Rebecca Davenport property, which goes a hundred and thirty acres on the other side of Swift Creek. So we think that Pitt Community College is well positioned for the next twenty-five years in terms of land.
Okay, thank you. Let me make a few comments since my fellow commissioners has made theirs. Uh, for me, this is one of those head heart issues. My heart says, let's go because I am totally supportive of Pitt Community College and I believe that the presentation you have made is a valid presentation, that, uh, we do need that space. That's what my heart says. But then when I look at it objectively, I am really concerned about the timing, which has already been mentioned, and I won't go into that. Uh, the other thing that concerns me is, is the impact that it will have on our citizens, the taxpayers. Uh, if, if this board decides to go forward with this referendum, I think that it is very important that in the presentation of this, that people understand that if you vote for a bond referendum, if you vote, vote in favor of it, you're also voting for a tax increase. Uh, and the tax increase, and I know that, um, you know, some, some people have probably already said, yeah, that's the typical commissioner talking about a tax increase and he's opposed to a tax increase. Well, uh, the thing that concerns me about, about a tax increase now is I believe that our, our economy is still very, very tenuous. Uh, I do believe we are beginning to see some light at the end of the tunnel, but that is not a very bright light yet. Uh, one of my major measuring criteria of the economy is the stock market. And last Wednesday and Thursday, it went down five hundred and sixty points. Uh, yesterday, it was down another hundred and thirty. So I, I think that we are improving, our economy is improving, but I think it's going to be very slow and it's going to be some up and down. And to, um, add on to that, uh, one and three-four cents tax increase on our citizens right now, to me, would be, uh, very difficult to do. Uh, so, so, you know, there are my comments, which no major new comments from what my fellow commissioners have said. Uh, yes.
Um, I, I think maybe we've gathered a lot of information today and I kind of, I do support what Commissioner Long said about maybe we want to ponder a little bit more before we take a vote. As far as the county commissioners, you all may not feel that way, but I would like to consider that. But I would also like to throw out a thought about maybe an alternative, and it's just a thought, it's kind of a compromise. And based on the, the, the speed of getting this done and getting our citizens informed, as many of us have said, that if you vote for this bond referendum, then you're looking at at least a one and a quarter cent tax increase, whether it's ten dollars or twenty dollars or thirty dollars, it's there. And we've all talked about all the other things that are coming down the pipe for us as a county that we're going to have to look at. We cannot ignore the E block anymore. We've put it off for two years and I don't think we're going to hear about this at next budget time. I'm predicting we're going to hear about it in six months. I think that the law enforcement's going to come back and say, this has got to happen. And it has already creeped up to almost a million dollars and it's going to cost us annually about eight hundred thousand plus to keep it on board, is that right? To pay the salaries and all of that. So, you know, that's a tax increase because we don't have that money. We set it at budget time this year and budget time the year before. So that's another tax increase that is almost inevitable. And some things are things you won't and some things have got to happen, and that's one of them. Um, I asked, um, about the quarter cent sales tax reserve. And I wonder if we could look now, and I'd like not for us to make a decision right now, but for us to consider this and think about it. That amount of money that's in the quarter cent sales tax reserve, not all of it, but part of it, could fully fund the basic law enforcement training center. We could pay for it cash upfront. If we were to look at doing that now and postponing until we have a little bit more time to make sure the citizens are well informed and understand what will happen if this eighteen million for the science building, if they approve that in a bond referendum. So I think we'd have more time to get out, talk to the citizens, go to the different clubs and organizations and like we did in, in the past. Was our last bond referendum, the one that was done twenty-four years ago in eighty-nine, in which there was a tax increase? I know the quarter cent sales tax was a bond referendum, but not just for...
For, for Pitt Community College.
But that's for us, right? We haven't had a bond referendum that increased taxes.
I believe there was a bond referendum tried by the public schools in the mid-nineties that did not pass.
Right. I forgot that one, but I remember that. So...
Failed big time.
Anyway, I just, um, you know, I've said enough, but that's something I would like for us to think about maybe between now and when we meet on the eighth and maybe make a decision at that time. That's kind of what I'm proposing.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Owens?
You know, uh, I prefaced a while ago about the, my concern about the time effort, perfection of this. Dr. Massey said he and his people have been working with this and, uh, that they can function and do this. I remember seeing yesterday that, uh, some seventy-six, seventy-six percent of the people live from month to month. Now, if you have a bond referendum saying you're going to have a cent and a half tax increase... increase, if the voters want to do that, that's prerogative. To answer the Pitt Community College and Dr. Massey, I move that we, might not give a second, but that we do this proposed bond referendum setting forth the amount of tax increase it would show.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Let me clarify that. In other words, that amount of taxes increase, it's not going to be, it's going to be 2%. Let's, nobody beat around the bush, but it will be put on the ballot with that. That's my concern. I agree with that. Give the people an opportunity to vote. That's what they're requesting.
So to have that wording on the ballot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, absolutely.
But we're not, we're not officially endorsing, if it is, that'll be...
This is just for the ballot.
Okay.
We would bring back the official resolution on July 8th to set all the formal actions into motion at that meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we need to be clear. There's a difference between two cent tax increase and one point something. And so it ought to be exactly what it is.
We should probably, I want to address in terms of, let Duane address this, on the debt service for the principal and interest. Duane, can you address what Citibank has told us on that?
When Scott is quoting the 1.5 cents increase to service to debt, the schedules that we've received from our financial institution have a varying range, anywhere from 1.4 to 1.6, depending on the curve of the debt. Because there is a resolution that's going before the local government commission that is mandating, if you recall in the past, you've been able to service debt up to, up to 25 years. The resolution that's going forth is going to put a cap at 20 years on geo-debt, COPS, limited obligation bonds. It'll be a maximum of 20 years, as well as a requirement to keep the principal amount flat. And so what that does, in essence, is frontloads the interest payments. It would frontload the interest payment on your general obligation debt. So it would be a little higher in the first four to five years, and then it would taper off throughout the life of the debt. So it's not, it's a floating, somewhat of a floating debt service payment that will be frontloaded and then will taper off probably about year six through '20.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
This money that we're talking about, are you putting in the upkeep, janitorial services and so forth that's got to be paid? Is that included in that? Otherwise, you're going to have to, you've got to find that money somewhere.
What Duane is referencing, the 1.6 cents, is just the servicing, the principal and interest. You still have the $250,000 for your janitorial insurance, security.
So the sum of both the capital expenditure and the operating expenditure is about 1.8 cents tax increase?
At its maximum.
Right, at its highest. At the maximum, okay.
Which will then taper off.
Yes, but we've got to have that money covered those first four or five years, so that's what we're talking about.
Correct.
Okay. So the motion, Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just for my clarification, the motion was to approve, to have the bond forward with the language that the exact amount of any tax increase would be included.
So what this does is gives the citizens an opportunity to express their opinion about whether or not they want to have a 1.8 cents tax increase.
For PCC.
For, yeah.
The bill.
But this is just now, we will vote on the official bond.
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Because based upon the result of that election, then we have an official decision to make.
Dr. Massey?
Correct.
Correct. Dr. Massey? You know, it's difficult to get into the weeds here with a lot of these pennies, but it is important. The operating expense projection that I gave to Mr. Elliott is one that we need, we can work on. We can bring that down even further, because we know the continuing expense to you, which is a major consideration for you in the detention center, because you not only have the staff, but the benefits and all that. We're not talking about that in relation to this program. It's mainly utilities and water. But we can work on bringing those costs down to a very low level. So I'll be in communication with Mr. Holder and Mr. Elliott about that.
Everybody clear on...
And I'm not sure on what the exact wording. We may want to defer to legal, but possibly if we could set a not-to-exceed amount on the ballot, that could potentially be an option.
Okay.
I could say that wording, we would seek also the recommendation of our bond counsel and would need approval from the Department of Justice.
Okay. Everybody clear on what we're voting on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's vote. Okay.
That's what you wanted in, Dr. Mas.
Please?
That's what you wanted in.
It is, it is. And I would be very welcome to come back to you before the 8th or on the 8th and provide any other details that you would like to see, proof that we are going to go at this very vigorously and comprehensively with the voters. I agree 100% with what Mr. Owens suggested in terms of the language. We want to be out front and honest with the voters.
Very good. Any additional comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Just one last thing. I think that we should all, in the timeframe, make sure that we're reaching out to the public on this, and that we also consider Ms. Ward's suggestion. I think it was prudent. I think it accomplishes one thing quickly, and then it offsets what we're looking at on the bond referendum, should it move forward. And we also need to remember the other debts we're considering when it comes to the Southwest bypass potential for that and the effect on our bond rating, and where this will put us with the ability to attempt that project if we so choose. We've got a lot of big decisions that are going to affect us for many years to come. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask a question here that has to do with we as commissioners. Now, a little while ago, it was stated that as a body, a board, we've got to remain neutral. But as individuals, can we not go out and support this? Not in the capacity as a commissioner, but in the capacity of saying, hey, I'm a private citizen and I support this.
I believe you as elected officials can do that. We as paid staff cannot. We have to remain.
County paid staff.
All right.
And we will further research and give you clear instruction on what I believe you can and cannot do as we move forward through this process.
I'd like that information sooner rather than later.
I can tell you permission is, we have a right to go out and talk for it or against it.
We did it on the quarter cent sales tax.
I did it on the last one. So you can remember that.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Do I have a motion? We adjourn.
We adjourn.
Motion, second. Let's vote. Thank you, Dr. Massey. We appreciate it.
[inaudible]